The Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
My pledge of allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the right to live.
The City Council offers our residents an opportunity to address us informally, and I'd like to read the open podium invitation. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the City Council on issues related to Eden Prairie City Government prior to each council meeting. Council meetings typically occur the first and third Tuesday of each month, here in this room, from 6:30 to 6:55 PM. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the City Manager's Office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and subject matter, so that we can be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the City Manager's Office. So for the sake of educating people that are in the audience that might be interested in this, some cities have a separate body for Housing Redevelopment Authority, which is an entity which authorizes spending in certain times. Here in Eden Prairie, the City Council functions as the HRA. So we embed an HRA meeting within a City Council meeting. So tonight, I'm going to call the HRA meeting to order, and the first order of business within the HRA meeting is to approve the minutes from our last HRA meeting held back on December 6, 2022. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve the HRA minutes from December 6, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right, Mr. Getchow, I'll let you introduce our one order of business within the HRA meeting.
Thank you, members of the HRA. You have before you an amended agreement, amended TIF plan, an amended TIF agreement for the Blue Stem North Housing Project. So that's the major housing project that's part of the Golden Triangle 70th Avenue Station. So 400 and some units of housing that you approved back in, I believe it was, 2022. And so at that time as well, you approved, as you do for all of the housing projects that offer or would offer affordable housing, tax increment financing for that project. The amendment before you tonight, the amended agreement, is because the project is being delayed into 2025. But the budget that was initially established is adequate for the TIF financing, but the city, due to the increased cost of construction that will be occurring, the city would be asked to provide more TIF assistance and to upgrade the agreement that we had from approximately two years ago. The modification conforms with all aspects of TIF statutes, meets all tests, and as you know, the tax increment that you're providing for this project is toward the affordable units that would be part of this housing development within, I would say, just yards, if not feet, of the planned light rail station that is in that area. So the ask of you as an HRA is to approve the resolution that modifies the TIF financing plan and approve the new amended and restated agreement. We do have our financial advisor from Ellers and Associates here as well that works on all of our TIF plans and agreements, if you were to have any questions.
So there will be a quiz on exactly what that just meant, all of it, in just a few moments. So just for the sake of the council as well, and the public, anyone listening, the approval for this project went through a City Council meeting some years ago, and we vetted that and spent a lot of time. So this is really just fairly perfunctory. It's a tweak to the actual financing for that project. And TIF stands for Tax Increment Financing. It's a tool that we use to grab future dollars and help a project out in the moment, in the present. And it's a way, we always get something for it, because we're giving the potential of future tax dollars. We get sometimes more open space, in this case, affordable housing. And then that money goes back into that project, allowing them to do that. Counsel, any questions you have or comments? If not, we could move right into this. Someone want to make a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution adopting a modification to the Tax Increment Financing Plan for Tax Increment Financing District Number 26-GTS Housing and approve the authorized execution of amendment restated Tax Increment Development Agreement for GTS Housing.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Now, Mr. Getchow, anything else to come before the HRA meeting this evening?
There is not.
Sir, could I entertain a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting? Don't get excited. Just meeting within the meeting. Go ahead. Somebody?
I'll move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, now we step back into our regular City Council meeting. We have a couple under proclamations and presentations this evening. Mr. Getchow?
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. We are very excited to present our first award, and I see our community center manager in the council meeting as well, with our parking and recreation director, to present us with, I believe, another, I don't know how many this is, but I think we've got a string of awards here from the Sun Sailor related to our community center. So I will let Jay and Val present us with that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council members, we'll be presenting you with two awards tonight. The first one is for the Round Lake Splash Pad. And again, this is based on the reader's poll of the Sun Sailor. They do it on an annual basis, and we've been very fortunate to be able to win at least a couple of these on an annual basis. So as you know, the Round Lake Splash Pad, one of three splash pads in the city, another one at Miller Park, and a soon-to-be-open one at Nesbit Preserve Park. What makes this one unique is it's our largest, but it's also a part of Round Lake Park and the beach that's there and serves as an enhancement to that experience. You may remember, a few years ago, we were named as one of the top beach towns in the nation. And when you think about Riley, and when you think about Round Lake, and those two beaches, as well as the beach at that Three Rivers provides for us, too, that is three really safe and high-quality places to have that beach experience. But what we do know, and what really drove us to select Round Lake as a location for a splash pad, is you can't always count on Mother Nature. And that lake had given us some trouble over the years in water levels and water quality. Luckily, we've been fortunate, due to some really proactive treatments, that that's been a good location. But this splash pad, when you think of where it is located with the lake, even if you're not feeling safe or comfortable swimming in a lake, you can still have that water experience. So it's just not as, it's the lake itself, a good quality experience. But for those in our community that may not feel it safe, splash pads, especially for younger kids, make a big difference in that experience. So we're really happy to present it to you. And then I will invite the mayor down for pictures, but I'm going to turn it over to Valerie Verley, who's our community center manager, to tell you more about the award for the community center.
So I have the second award tonight. Your Honor, Council members, we, for the eighth year in a row, received the Best Recreation Center with the Sun Sailor for the Eden Prairie Community Center. We realize the community center is well-loved in our community and even surrounding area, which is premise for the award. And we definitely have seen the love and usage of that in real time, especially this last six months. Just to paint a quick picture, we, in this January, we had, just with membership alone, 26,000 visits. And in January of 2022, we had only 16, so 10,000 more, just in our regular membership, not including the unique members, so a lot of traffic. And membership in general, at the moment, is about 15% up from last year. So we're definitely seeing an uptick of people coming back after the pandemic, and things leveling out, getting closer back to normal. And even open swim, we were seeing record numbers. For some reason, in March, we saw upwards of 5,000 people. January was only three, and February was about 2,500, our aquatic supervisor told us today. So even like on a sample Saturday, we have about 147 people that we get into open swim, and then we get about another 50 on the waitlist. So we kind of try and funnel in as many as we can and serve as many as we can, because we know how much they want to be there and how much they love the community center, just like we do. So we're very happy and humbled to get the award yet again, and we couldn't thank you guys enough for all your unwavering support. Thank you.
Do we hang all of these somewhere? Because we win a lot of them. Is there a wall at the?
There is one behind the front desk of the community center, yes.
I'll have to stop and see that.
Yeah, definitely.
Should I come down?
Valerie, just a quick question. So are we back to 2019 level now, or still below?
Still inching back. 19 numbers. We're closer to 2,600 in memberships, and right now, we're about a little over 2,000. So we're getting closer.
So we're getting closer.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's great.
I think we forgot to say congratulations. Good job.
The city does win a lot of awards. It doesn't in any way minimize or negate when we keep winning them. It just really adds value to everything else we do so well. I get the opportunity now to also declare a City Council proclamation. We do this annually for Arbor Day. I'm proud of this particularly because I was part, back in the mid-'90s, of the city of Eden Prairie, developing and writing one of the strongest tree preservation ordinances in the state of Minnesota, which has been copied now many times, and has sustained or been supported, at least through a legal, well, we've never been sued on it, but we've been supported that it's been a good ordinance. And today, Eden Prairie has more trees in it than at any time since the glaciers, is what I've always been told, that we are so reforested into an urban forest. So it's pretty exciting. So with that, I will read a proclamation for Arbor Day. Proclamation Arbor Day, April 29, 2023. Whereas Arbor Day provides people in Eden Prairie the opportunity to celebrate the importance of trees and forests to our economy, health, culture, history, and future of the city, and whereas trees are of great value, as they provide clean air, water, shade, energy savings, wildlife habitat, and recreational opportunities, and whereas thoughtfully choosing, planting, and caring for a diverse mix of trees, and caring for trees as described in the city's urban forest management plan, makes our community more resilient into the future, and whereas trees play a major role in combating climate change by sequestering carbon from the atmosphere, thereby offsetting greenhouse gas emissions, and whereas trees help Eden Prairie meet the Climate Action Plan goal of community-wide carbon neutrality by 2050, and we're one of the only cities to have that as well. I'm very proud of that. And whereas Eden Prairie first celebrated Arbor Day back in 1982, and whereas Eden Prairie has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree stewardship and tree planting practices, now therefore, I, Ron Case Mayor of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Eden Prairie, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's urban forestry program. And I further urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to promote the well-being of present and future generations adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council tonight on April 4, 2023. Ronald A. Case Mayor. Let's see, we don't need an actual vote on that. It's just more of a proclamation that we're all agreeing to that. Yay. Is that it?
That's correct, Mayor, yeah. I want to add, too, because I know that we don't have another meeting this month. This is the only meeting in April. We do have an Arbor Day event in the city. So on the 29th of April, that's a Saturday, it's a day after Arbor Day. Arbor Day is on the 28th. We have Arbor Day Fair and Walk at Staring Lake Park.
We also have a park cleanup day.
We do.
15th and 16th, I think, or?
The 15th. We have a cleanup day on the 15th.
It's a Saturday?
That's a Saturday.
And I think I saw you call into the city, I don't know if you have to register, but maybe to let people know or find out where you are gathering?
That's correct. Yeah, actually, April's got a lot going on. You've got the cleanup coming up in a couple of weekends. We have the ECO Expo that's at the mall that the Rotary Club is sponsoring, the week following that. The week following that, we have the Arbor Day Walk and Green Fair. We also have our Sustainability Commission's going to be having an expo as well, electric vehicle kind of expo. So there's a lot coming up, and so we're The tree sale is part of the Arbor Day event, PG. So yeah, that's from 10 to 1 at Staring Lake, and that's part of the tree sale while supplies last, because
Well, and they've already probably been purchased, but 400 or so trees were offered out, and people had to call in a certain time on certain day. That's exciting, too, though.
They did, Mayor. I think there's still some seedlings that you can get. But yeah, there's a lot of, you know, what I'll call sustainability events.
And all these events are on our website.
Absolutely.
If people didn't happen to catch all that.
Yeah.
And I just noticed pulling in tonight, I'd seen some construction before, but all the new electric car charging stations to the left when you pull in, that's pretty exciting. So how many do we have? I didn't count. There's a lot, like six or eight out there now? Something. There's a good number.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't know if it's eight, but, eight, Robert? Yeah, eight.
Eight total.
Good. Yeah, you were right.
Yeah. Exciting. Very good. Thank you. All right. Mr. Getchow, we have a couple donations this evening.
We do, and I will, as is typical, I will turn things over to Mr. Lotthammer.
Your Honor, Council members, the first donation that we're going to recognize tonight is from JA Price. It's $1,000 towards the hometown celebration. And once again, this is an annual donation by this company. So we really appreciate their continued support.
Great. Counsel, any questions, or is there someone that would make the motion to accept?
Move to adopt a resolution accepting the donation of $1,000 from JA Price Agency for the July 3rd and 4th hometown celebration.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and I'll make a comment about that in a moment. But go ahead with, I believe, Mr. Lotthammer again.
Yes, another continuing supporter of ours, MedExpress. It is for the Winter Blast, and it's a $350 donation.
Counsel, any questions? If not, make a motion.
Move to adopt a resolution accepting the donation of $350 from MedExpress Urgent Care for the Winter Blast.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. So what I, the comment I make all the time is that we deeply appreciate these donations, and that they really help our tax dollars go further. So also, just to mention that I'm sure 4th of July, JA Price and any other group that contributes will be advertised, and we try to thank them at that event as well, as much as we can. So if any companies out there listening now would like to be part of that, we would welcome your contributions as well for all of the activities we do, but maybe particularly here, the 4th of July. All right. Counsel, any items to add to the agenda this evening under Council Member Reports? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right. Minutes. Anyone have questions about anything within the council workshop or the City Council meeting held back on Tuesday, March 21st? If not, is there a motion to approve them both?
Move to approve the, move to approve the following City Council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, March 21, 2023. City Council meeting held Tuesday, March 21, 2023.
Need further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I agree, second. Do we need a second?
Say what?
Does someone have to second it?
Oh, did no one second it?
No.
Second.
Oh, great. Sorry. Let's take that vote again. Did I forget something? That worries me when I forgot that. But so now we've had the motion, and we've seconded.
No.
Now, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you so much. Catch me on that. All right. Had me nervous. All right. So consent calendar. These are items for any student in the audience. These are items that are not necessary to have great discussion on. They're generally routine. We clump them all together. But I always ask, Counsel, any items that you wish to learn more about or pull for discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve Consent Items A through X?
I'll move for approval of Items A through X on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right. Public hearings. Mr. Getchow, we have one this evening, I believe. We don't, we have two.
We do have two, Mayor.
Sorry, I didn't turn the page. I forgot.
That's okay. The second one's more internal to staff. But the first one is an application that the city received for what will be a Holiday Inn Express, which has most recently been a Comfort Inn, at 7740 Flying Cloud Drive. It's a three-acre site that I said would be in Holiday Inn Express. As part of the rebranding, remodeling, and refresh, the owners are planning to add a pool on the first level. So by doing that, they are seeking a site plan amendment to construct that 1,800-square-foot addition to accommodate the pool. There are parking stalls that are being removed to comply with the setbacks, but they're still in compliance with all codes, and no waivers are requested, even after their planned pool addition. I believe the applicant is here tonight to provide a presentation and overview of their project. This was the type of project that simply comes straight to the City Council, does not come through Planning Commission, because it is considered a minor site amendment. But you do still need to hold a public hearing, and then your only action then is to direct staff to prepare a development agreement for the City Council approval of the project.
Yes, welcome. Come forward and give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Ankit Bhakta, and I'm the owner of the hotel on 7740 Flying Cloud Drive. Well, that, the proposed addition is 1,800 square feet, just a pool and a patio. There's going to be some parking stalls removed right here, where the, basically where Flying Cloud is at, where the light rail is at now. Those will be removed. And I think we'll still have an additional 40 extra parking stalls. We're reducing our room count from 119 to 99 by adding suites. We'll have plenty of parking. And that's just the first-floor layout plan. And just in detail. And part of the franchise agreement is I have to paint some stucco on the outside. So that's what it'll look like. And the elevations for the pool addition on the side, and some lighting in the front, and lighting in the middle, blue lighting.
And that's a franchise requirement, not a city.
Yeah, franchise requirement, yep. And that's elevation for the addition, and the patio up front. And the brick will, as best as we can, match the existing brick. It's 35-year-old brick, so we'll do our best to stain it, and matching the roof line with the corners. And that's a rendering.
Thanks. Counsel, any questions of the proponent? If, this will be a public hearing, so if we have any need to call you back up, we certainly will, unless you have something else you want to add.
No.
Great. Thanks for being here.
Okay.
Counsel, do we want to go ahead and have a, hold a public hearing? If you have questions, you certainly can ask later, or would you like to right now? Mr. Freyberg, you look curious.
Oh, that's fine.
You're good. You've had that questioning look on your face. All right. Oh, did you want to? Oh, okay. You can sit for now, and we'll call you back if, great. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the room tonight that wishes to address the counsel on this small but important development issue regarding this hotel? Okay, seen none. Counsel, do you have any questions, or should we go? You can still question if we go ahead and close the public hearing, and then go ahead and vote and second on the amendment to this or to the development agreement. Then we can still have a conversation. So is there someone that wants to make the motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Do you want to keep going?
Do you want to do the whole thing?
Sure.
And direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Sir, second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Any questions, any comments?
I would like to at least say that it's nice to have it refurbished and updated a bit, and it's going to be an asset to the city to have a little nicer hotel there than had previously been, and under still a good brand like it was before. So that's, it's a good thing, in my view.
Good. Anything else? If not, let's vote then. We've made the motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, welcome. Thank you so much for investing, reinvesting back in our town. Okay, we do have a first reading here of an ordinance. Mr. Getchow?
We do, Mayor. Thank you. Our community development director, Julie Kleeman, is going to provide a presentation on creating a new mixed zoning use district. And this comes out of our comprehensive plan, Aspire 2040. As we are seeing transit-oriented development and development around our mall and town center, we've been contemplating for a long time and planning for a long time for a new mixed zoning use district. So Julie is bringing that forward tonight, and this is the first reading of an ordinance to establish that.
Thank you. As part of the presentation that I have to share with you this evening, I will do an overview of what is proposed as part of that mixed-use zoning district, if I could have the, have the presentation shared. Thank you. As Rick mentioned, this is an implementation strategy that comes out of our comprehensive plan, Aspire 2040. So what you're looking at on this screen is a screen, a snapshot essentially of the areas in the community that were guided mixed use as a part of the comprehensive plan update. So it is that brown area right around the mall, Eden Prairie Center, as well as the kind of Fountain Place area. And then there are two parcels up on Martin Drive that were guided for mixed use as well. So these areas are what was considered as part of the long-term plan for mixed use. The goals of the mixed-use zoning district, as I mentioned, include the implementation of the Aspire 2040 plan. It's really to provide some flexibility for compatible uses, and including multifamily attached residential development within some of our more commercial areas. So if you take a look at other regional malls in the area, you'll see many of them are adding residential housing in the proximity of some of their more commercial districts. Currently, our zoning ordinance does not allow for that opportunity within commercial zoning districts. So moving forward with a mixed use would allow that flexibility of multiple uses to be incorporated within one project area. As a part of some of the more specific requirements of that zoning district, we would look to promote a cohesive and unified development character. So whether that is incorporating similar architectural features, similar colors, a master sign plan would be required as a part of any development plan that, that comes forward. And it really creates the opportunity to stimulate additional reinvestment in economic vitality in some of those areas that might need some additional refresh as, as those properties age. Another goal of the ordinance was really to maintain the existing rights and opportunities that exist for current businesses. So as staff was drafting this ordinance, there was a lot of attention paid to what are the existing development patterns? What are those standards that are currently in that built environment to ensure that we're not creating any non-conforming uses as a part of, of the existing development? The mixed use can occur not only in a horizontal, but also a vertical fashion as well. So the ordinance is written with both of those concepts in mind as, as you review that. The information before The information before you this evening is simply to create the mixed-use zoning regulations. It's not to actually rezone any of those properties. That would be a future action taken by the council through the public hearing process at the request of property owners. So the main differences that, from the existing zoning of those properties that are guided mixed use is essentially to allow the addition of multifamily residential units as a permitted use. The comp plan identifies densities up to 75 units per acre that would be allowed in those areas. Doesn't mean they have to be at 75, it could be something less than that. It also promotes shared parking options, creating scale of efficiencies between compatible uses. So if you've got some uses that have off-peak times, that they can collaborate with one another to do double duty, if you will, for parking. I already mentioned the cohesive design element and then promoting pedestrian mobility, bicycle parking. That is something that we have at a staff level been working to incorporate through our practice and negotiation on development projects. This would take that requirement and build it into the, into the code. As you know, in our town center and TOD areas, that is a real focus of promoting bicycle parking and pedestrian connections. The requirements that are being prepared as part of the mixed use are not at that same level because of the density and intensity of development and the TOD in town center is expected to be a bit higher. So it is a scaled-back version in the mixed-use district. And then I also, as I mentioned, a signage plan would be required. Right now, as development projects come forward, there's always a condition in the development agreement that signage is reviewed after the fact through the sign permit process. But on these mixed-use projects, we'd want to get a look at that on the front end and understand how that all works together. So as I mentioned, the, some of the highlights would be the architectural standards such as building materials and articulations and deviations in architecture are the same as what is currently required in the commercial and RM2.5 zoning districts. The only additional requirement there is, is that cohesive review. And the code does talk about in detail what that means in order to provide direction early on to the developer, so there's not a surprise at the tail end of the, tail end of the project and the review. Permitted uses would continue to be the same as they are in several of our commercial zoning district with the addition of multiple family residential added as a permitted use by right. The standards for setbacks and other performance requirements are no more restrictive. So again, speaking to that comment I made earlier about not creating any non-conforming uses with the existing development. The parking requirements remain the same, except that there is an opportunity, as I said, for efficiency and scale, particularly for those retail and shopping center uses where the minimum requirement can be reduced if there's shared parking or there are other criteria that are met. For instance, the parking could be reduced up to 20% if those conditions can be met. We've had a fair amount of conversation among staff and also at Planning Commission and city council workshops about the large parking areas that are currently built and that there is not always as much need for the amount of parking that is provided. So this really allows the opportunity to take a look at each project on its own and understand what the business needs are and how they might collaborate with one another in order to reduce the overall parking needs while ensuring that adequate parking can be provided. And anything higher than a 20% reduction would be required to go through a PUD or a waiver process. So with that, that's a high-level overview. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
If I can just ask one real quick and just, I'll get right to you. I'm trying to figure out what the difference between the mixed-use zoning district is and a PUD. And is, does it have to do with multiple ownership versus one owner? What, what is the difference?
A PUD is, can be applied in any zoning district regardless whether it's residential, industrial, or commercial. The mixed-use zoning district could still utilize a PUD if there were waivers that were being requested, but the mixed use really gets to allowing a mix of permitted uses instead of being solely commercial, solely industrial, solely office or residential. It allows you to integrate multiple uses into a single development.
And we can put the zoning, the new district, on top of current zones, right? As long as, again, the owner of the land can actualize the value of that land. So are we planning on going ahead and moving ahead and putting mixed-use zoning, you know, legally, directly on top of properties?
The intention at this time is for the mixed-use rezonings to be triggered by requests of the property owner rather than the city proactively going out and rezoning those properties. And the mixed-use zoning district would replace the underlying zoning district. So for instance, if one of the properties within the mall area said, I want to come in and be rezoned to mixed use, they'd no longer be zoned commercial, they'd be zoned mixed use and would allow for any of those permitted uses to be built upon that property so long as there was a mix of those uses. They'd have to have kind of two of those land use categories represented.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes. Will the same requirements for flowers and flowering bushes in the area still exist or will there be more for this kind of an area?
The landscaping requirements for the mixed-use zoning district would be consistent with the landscaping requirements for the multifamily or commercial zoning districts. It would be based on the types of uses that are proposed and the same calculations would apply.
Is the same go for benches and sitting areas? Because in some cases, some of the nicer parts of the area are some benches or a fountain or a sitting area. So will that carry over or be encouraged, you know, to be more plentiful in this?
Councilmember Nelson, yes, that is something that is added into the mixed-use zoning district is that there will be street furniture as a part, required as a part of the development proposal.
Excellent. Also, what about sidewalk fairs or sales that sometimes mixed-use areas have an annual or a spring something or other that goes for a number of merchants or, you know, whatever? Is that going to be allowed as well to make a little different fare atmosphere for some of these mixed uses which often exist in other communities?
The same types of requirements that exist for any outdoor events or special events that are in code would also apply to the mixed-use zoning district as they do to others.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, councilmember Toomey.
Is this a trend that other cities are doing? Are they adopting similar?
Councilmember Toomey, I would say yes, that not only regionally but nationally in areas or suburban areas such as Eden Prairie or similar characteristics. It is certainly a trend.
Anyone else? Yes, councilmember Freiber.
I'd just like to say, I think the way I'm reading this is going to give a whole lot more flexibility down the road. Because it seems things are moving awful fast right now, the way development is happening. Am I, am I on the right track when I'm saying that?
Councilmember Freiber, that's exactly correct. It provides additional flexibility beyond what the current existing zoning districts allow.
I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Anything else? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this new ordinance to amend the city code, Chapter 11, relating to mixed use, to a new mixed-use zoning district? Anyone? If not, counsel, why don't you go ahead and close the public hearing, make the motion, and we can continue conversation.
Excuse me, move to close a public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend city code, Chapter 11 and Chapter 9 relating to a new mixed-use zoning district.
Is there a second? Okay. Counsel, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. Payment of claims. For students, this is a listing of basically all the expenditures of the city between the last meeting and this meeting. In the old days, it would have been all the checks, it would have been written. So, it's all electronic today. So, counsel, any items that you wish to question? If not, is there a motion for approval of the payment of claims?
Move to approval of the payment of claims as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Because this is so important that we take responsibility for every dollar that gets spent, there's a roll call vote, roll call.
Councilmember Freiber?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right. Moving down to reports, reports of council members. Every year, we participate in what's called the Mayor's Water Challenge and it's communities across the United States of America actually compete to pledge to reduce water. I mean, there's no accountability in the sense that it's by your own honesty and, and trusting level, but nonetheless, people go in from each city and pledge to reduce water consumption. And then cities get judged based on size of cities. And we have won periodically, I think through the years, several times. I'm not sure, while I've been mayor, but I think when Mayor Terry Lukens was. So I would encourage all of you, I did go in just a couple of days ago and you take a survey and, and you pledge that you'll work at, you know, fixing leaks on your faucet and, and being careful when you're watering plants, that kind of thing. It's a fairly easy survey to take. But again, I would encourage everyone in this room to take that survey. And the more people that take it, that's what helps a city to win. I'm not sure what we win, more than bragging rights, but it's so pretty cool. I don't know if there are awards or something, but...
Mayor, there, I think there are individuals that can win awards. Those that sign up and go to mywaterpledge.com, take the pledge, they have different prizes. I think there was a period of time where they were actually giving away a vehicle to maybe someone in the winning city, a resident that, that pledged. But I think there's different gifts, like every day or every week that they, they give out. I think there's one I saw that they'll pay your water utility bill for a year.
I think it's for the month of April. There's a set amount of time, yeah.
So that's correct, Mayor. So the whole challenge is the month of April.
It says it right there in the, in the notes. All right, counsel, any further questions, discussion? Is there a motion that we would adopt the resolution supporting this?
Move to adopt the resolution supporting the Valen Mayor's challenge for water preservation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. This city council, we're part of what's called a statutory Plan B form of city government, which means the legislature basically wrote our constitution. We're one of 600 or so cities across the state, I think, that are statutory cities, which means that we, the council here, we hire one person and that's our city manager. And then we direct through policy and ordinances, we direct the city manager to go out and fulfill how we direct him or her, in this case, him. And we take our lead, of course, from the voters, you know, from the residents of Eden Prairie. So our city manager, Rick Getcho, we are responsible for evaluating him and setting his salary on an annual basis. And again, this is true across the state. So at our last meeting, we had a closed meeting, closed to the public. We're only allowed to close meetings for personnel issues and/or legal court issues, lawsuits. So we were allowed to close it to evaluate our city manager. And I would like to read the summary of the closed session and then someone will make a motion to set our city manager's salary for the year 2023. So here's the summary of closed session held on March 21st, 2023. The city manager's contract provides for an annual performance review by the city council in conjunction with a salary review. At its meeting on March 21st, 2023, the city council held a closed session to evaluate the performance of the city manager for the prior year. In that closed session, Mr. Getcho summarized some of the city's accomplishments in 2022 under his leadership. That included success with fiscal and budget management without having to raise the tax levy as much as other cities. He highlighted achievements in affordable housing, sustainability, enhanced community engagement, ongoing development and redevelopment despite recent court challenges, and implementation of the city's race equity report. Mr. Getcho also discussed upcoming goals for 2023. The council then considered and discussed Mr. Getcho's performance, he left the room, giving him overwhelmingly positive reviews. Each member of the council praised Mr. Getcho's excellent performance. We called him back in for this. They commented on his responsiveness, the outstanding staff that he has assembled, and the positive work environment that city employees enjoy under Mr. Getcho's leadership. We periodically, in fact, every year, win the only city in the state to be awarded one of the best places to work. They encouraged we, him to continue, the council encouraged him to continue work with legislative leaders on funding opportunities so that the city can maximize taxpayer dollars. The council then discussed Mr. Getcho's salary in light of his excellent performance review. The council determined to increase Mr. Getcho's salaries to, to the amount permitted under the city's existing waiver to the statutory salary cap. And that's set by the legislature. We are maxed out, we're capped across the state of Minnesota. Cities can, cannot raise their city manager salaries above a level set by the legislature. That's not true in Wisconsin, Iowa, other states. And we agreed to provide, not only to the salary cap, but to provide 210 additional hours of paid PTO to be placed in a dedicated account that cannot be paid out until he leaves employment with the city. With that, is there a motion that someone would make to approve then the increase in the city manager's salary?
Move to approve an increase in the city's manager's salary for 2023 to $213,566 and provide an additional 210 hours of paid PTO to be placed in a dedicated account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I just want to say that the five of us, as I read, have been incredibly pleased with the performance of Mr. Getcho. And we regularly not only brag about him literally when we're around other city council members, mayors, and city managers and city staff. And we just say, we, we just believe we have the best in the state. And we hear that back from other cities and other council members. I mean, there are a lot of good city managers out there, definitely. I just feel like we have the best. And again, we are maxed out for what we could give him. We do worry across the state of Minnesota that people can flee our state and go right across the border into Wisconsin, Iowa, Illinois. I don't, I don't know about North and South Dakota, I don't think they have caps. And in some cases, make 100,000 or more greater than what you can make in the state of Minnesota. So we want to keep our city manager by pleasing, by hoping that this is a pleasant place to work. I hope you like us. Again, you've assembled a great group of people around you and I hope that this is a rewarding experience for you. At the end of the day, not everything's just about money, but money certainly helps. And we just want to make sure that we're rewarding you fairly as much as we can, so... All right, we've made the motion, it's been seconded.
Second.
Or seconded again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Let's see, where are we at here? So I believe, Mr. Getcho, is that?
That is the end, Mayor.
Counsel, anything else to bring before the council this evening? So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. This meeting is adjourned.